If you said something.
You can start now, Chair Chairman.
Yeah, I got you. The time is now five oh three. Good evening and welcome to the January twenty twenty, January twenty third, twenty twenty five, Plumb Prince George's Board of Education Budget Work Session for Public Hearings for FY twenty twenty six. I am Brandon Jackson, Chairman of the Prince George's County Board of Education. Thank you all for joining us. Please note the Spanish interpreting interpretation services are available during this evening's meeting. To access this feature, click the global icon at the bottom of the screen. Ms. Emily Bermudez, please make this announcement in Spanish.
Buenas tardes todas y bienvenidos a la reunión del presupuesto y audiencia pública para el año escolar dos mil veintiséis, para el año fiscal que se llevará a cabo el veintitrés de enero de dos mil veinticinco. Yo soy Brandon Jackson, el presidente de la Junta de Educación del Condado de Prince George. Muchas gracias por acompañarnos. Por favor, tenga en cuenta que estarán disponibles los servicios de interpretación en español durante esta reunión. Para acceder este, para acceder este servicio, haga clic en el globo, en el icono del globo que está en la parte baja de su pantalla.
For those unable to observe now, the meeting is being recorded and can be accessed later on PGCP's YouTube channel. In keeping with the board's rules of procedure, section four internet meetings, the internet standing rules are as follows. Members shall keep their video on, remain on camera at all times, keep their microphones on mute until recognized by the chairman, raise their hand icon and wait to be recognized by the chairman and unmute their microphones to speak and mute it when done speaking. Members may speak twice on any motion for two minutes each time. Failure to adhere to the internet standing rules will result in the member being removed until the member can rejoin when the rules can be adhered to. Before we proceed, the chairman reminds everyone to adjust their wireless communication devices to prevent technical interference with the meeting's recording. Please ensure all microphones are muted until the chairman grants you the floor.
Oh, what thing when, oh, I'm, I'm sorry. I thought I was supposed to be in a room to for simultaneous interpretation?
Yes, the globe is open for you to join.
Okay, okay.
Are we good to proceed?
Yes.
Okay. The chairman reminds all board members.
Can you, can you, don't hear me? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, Ms. Lopez, you have to send her over to the, the interpretation. She has to be assigned to a room so she can do the interpretation, simultaneous interpretation.
Yeah, she, she's being added. She just need to accept it.
She's supposed to go into a separate room so she can do the simultaneous, the two interpreters, they can do the simultaneous from there. It's not something that they click on the globe.
Ms. Emily has been added. Thank you, Ms. LaGuarda.
Um, okay.
Is there anything you can accept from your end, Ms. Um?
My end, I see.
Sorry about that. Ms. Lopez, can you try and send me and see if I can access it? I can do the simultaneous interpretation and Ms. Emily can stay on this side.
Are, are we good to proceed? All right. The chairman reminds all board members to ensure their microphones are turned on while speaking for recording purposes. Lastly, the chairman wishes to inform the public that the registration link for tonight's public meeting uh will remain open until seven P M. to accommodate additional comments. And according to policy eight, three, four, five, public comment, the public may register onsite for public hearings until notified that the testimony registration form is closed. The link can be found on the board webpage and the board's social media platforms. Ms. Lopez, please call the row.
Doctor Andrew. Ms. Boozer Struther.
Present.
Mister Briggs.
Present.
Ms. Brown.
Here.
Mrs. Goins McCants.
Present.
Mister Jungle. Doctor Moss. Ms. Walker.
Present.
Present.
Doctor Moss.
Present.
Mister Jackson.
Here.
There are six, um, members present.
I say, miembros presentes.
Okay, um, Rosa, are we still good with the interpreter being in the other room?
Yes, I believe, um, Ms. LaGuarda is interpreting Ms. Fuentes.
Um, but I still don't have access to the other room. The only, um, icon I see on my computer is my, it's in Spanish, not interpret.
Yes, let me, let me, um, add more again.
I'm also not in the other room. And can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, I'm not in the interpreting room either. So there's only one person there and at least two of us need to be there.
Okay, uh, Revel, can we, uh, pour them into a separate chat? Um, so we can proceed with the meeting and they can figure, you guys can figure it out on the back end?
Yes, we're working on it now.
All right. Thank you so much. So, uh, the chairman now yields the floor to board member going McCants, Chair of the Operation Budget and Fiscal Affairs Committee.
Thank you, Chairman Jackson, and thank you all for being here. I am truly honored to sit in this role and look forward to our collaboration for success. I want to acknowledge the incredible work and dedication of everyone that has led us to this point and excited to get our budget work session started. So this session is intended to address questions and provide answers regarding the budget. Each division will have eight minutes to present the responses to pre-submitted questions. The committee chair recognizes Ms. Smith for the budget process overview.
Um, I can, I can, uh, step in right now. Just wanted to, uh, thank you for that. Good evening, everyone. My name is Lisa Howell, the Chief Financial Officer. Um, as we prepare for the budget work sessions, questions have been provided to administration and written responses have been submitted back. Um, so the meeting today will give us an opportunity to ask for board members to ask clarifying questions to those written responses or ask additional questions that were not provided in advance in writing. Um, so with that being said, we will turn it over to, um, the board members to begin to ask the questions. I think, uh, Director Revel has the schedule of who's going to go up first.
And Chief Howell, before we do that, I did have some opening comments as well, just to, first of all, say good evening to, to everyone. Uh, that means staff, um, you know, members of the community, uh, board, uh, as well. I want to thank everyone really for the opportunity to be a part of this, uh, this critical work session on the, uh, as, as you all know, the twenty-six operating budget for the upcoming fiscal year. This budget, uh, in, in our eyes really reflects the shared commitment to really advancing the academic success, uh, well-being, uh, and and really opportunities for every student in, in Prince George's County Public Schools to move forward in the manner that we want them to move forward. Tonight, we're going to focus on six divisions, as you all know, specifically, uh, academics, communications, operations, school support and leadership, as well as business and management. Uh, um, these divisions represent the foundation of our efforts to really help sustain the high-quality education while improving systems and the services that really support our students, staff and families. So with that being said, um, I'd really, uh, at this point, I'd like to turn it back over to Mrs. Howell, her team, or the board to, to start proposed questions.
Absolutely. The committee chair recognizes Superintendent House again and the Division of Academics to, uh, present the responses to our pre-submitted questions.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having us. I am here with my team. I'll just start.
At this time, I'll, uh, ask.
Go ahead Superintendent House.
I was just going to introduce you, but you need no introduction.
Thank you. I appreciate you. Uh, so for the Division of Academics, just so that we all know who is in the room, uh, we are made up of career and technical education, curriculum and instruction, early learning, instructional support, special education and specialty programs in the arts. With that, just so you know, I do have an innovation officer that helps us with the movement of the work. Uh, the Division of Academics budget, uh, was created for academic creation, academic development and academic excellence as we continue to push forward, um, with our students and achievement. Some key things that you would have identified in the budget book for us is that our budget is aligned to the blueprint initiatives. It is, uh, assisting us next year of rolling out the literacy policy as well as the math plan that MSD is having us move forward. It is also pushing the work of special education, whether it be in our schools or our non-public placements. It is also aimed at professional development. It is aimed at CTE, technical skills assessments. We want to make sure that we continue to expand the work in the arts for us. Uh, digital access to textbooks as well as all of our materials that are going in and out of schools and looking at better ways and innovative approaches to continually adjust and change the work. I just wanted to point out for our division, when you looked at, uh, over forty-four budgets or in the budget book that reflect us, the bigot, biggest pockets of where our funds were sitting is in classroom teacher supplies, contracted supplies, workshop pay, rental of buildings and student supplies. Those are the largest areas because those are the areas by which we support schools with implementing our curriculum and our programs. This year I did have an opportunity to put in for positions and the majority of the positions put in from the Division of Academics were cost neutral, meaning that we found money in our own department or with reviewing our own programs, eliminating, uh, certain programs as they phased out to support the advocacy and to fund positions such as continue to push out, uh, more three D E schools that will be opening in the fall. Our high school immersion program is expanding to eleventh grade, so we have positions there. Um, we continue to, uh, support our P tech program. So majority of our, our positions are in specialty programs in the arts. You'll also notice that in discretionary funds, we had to do an enhancement where we asked for several positions, again, places where we have MOUs in place. And in those MOUs, we may have cost structures that go up, i.e. textbooks, um, for example, Junior Achievement Finance Park, where we asked for additional funds. And then the only other organizational change that I had this year was changing the name of instructional support to instructional support and operational, to support instruction and operational support, simply because that department handles all of the operations for the entire Division of Academics. For the questions that you had, many of them related to special education and they're related to, um, how we fund or why we would fund, um, uh, our non-public placement and when a student would move. So all of those questions have been answered. Pretty much we, in our special education budget, make sure that all of our students are covered. A, a huge amount goes to the placement of our students in our non-public placement. Those students are identified on a case-by-case basis through a process that we have in the system when we only reach a place and point where services that they may need are not provided in our district. Uh, someone asked question about our literacy, uh, just any data around literacy. We put the link there for you all for the data dashboard. Uh, we know that you all will need to be trained on how to use that, but you are able to access all of that information in that dashboard. Other questions were about, again, special ed had the majority of them. Another question was about enrollment and academic, um, outcomes for summer enrichment. Again, we provided that brief for you, so you have that at the last board meeting. There was a question about the innovation officer and what was the purpose of the officer position in the chief academic offers, officers budget? Our innovation officer, we are, um, very thankful, has an opportunity to look across all of our programs to make sure, number one, that we are doing what it is we said we want to do. Number two, that the programs we're implementing are actually meeting with success. Number three, that we're going out looking for innovative ways to, uh, bring programs or to reimagine how our students can learn and learn in an innovative way. So constantly working with every member of my team to just checks and balance. Are we getting better? Are we eliminating where we can and are we building in areas where we find that we have gaps? Another question asked about the administrative support specialist position that was added to the chief, um, academic officer's budget. That position really was not added going into this year. It was added into last year, but was done so after the budget book came out. But that position is simply because we have so many grants that move across our division, so many MOU, so many contracts in a, in a manner to be fiscally sound. We need a position that moves the work and works with our accountability office, works with our grants office, works with our budget office. Again, the Division of Academics has over forty budgets that I review and I want to make sure that what we said and we are committed to do that is being done and that position is in place to assist us with doing so. Another position asked, um, what's driving the increase for instructional and operational support? And I indicated that when you look across the Division of Academics, currently I have five directors and one supervisor. That supervisor for instructional support actually works with every division in the school system. They are our operation side. Then that position should really be sitting. When that position was created years ago, we were not doing any of this work. Now that we're doing so much work, that position really I've asked and I've put money towards it becoming a director, so it matches the other fi- fi- five positions in my division. The last question, I believe for me is around, um, two instructional specialists in the arts. And one of the things that we indicated, so we have, um, in the Division of Academics, majority of our positions are specialist positions. And we had two places where we had program coordinator. So we always look to see what's equitable, what makes sense, how the work is moving and are we looking across the whole division to make things equitable? So those positions aren't going away. They're just being renamed to match what's currently in the division. The last question, it was about twenty elementary special ed teachers. Really that happened last year and those positions were to fund Pointer Ridge and Glen, the new Glen Ridge Middle School. And that's the Pointer Ridge Autism Program, but they're showing up now because those, those moves were made once the budget book had come out. And those were the questions and just a little about the Division of Academics.
Thank you, Chief White. Uh, now each board member will have two point five minutes to ask their questions and receive an answer. Any unanswered portions within the allotted time will be captured as a follow-up. Board members, do you have any additional questions?
Committee Chair Goins McCants, I think we have, uh, board member Briggs, board member Walker, board member Brown and board member Dr. Moss, who have their hand raised?
Yes. Board member Briggs, I believe your hand was raised first.
Yes, thank you so much, Committee Chair, uh, Goins McCants. Um, and thank you so much, um, Dr. White for the presentation. Let's have one, one really quick, I guess, technical question um, about the non, um, public special education programs. Uh, for some reason, I was thinking that I know that with private schools and private programs, um, that may not receive federal funding, they don't have to follow certain restrictions that exist. I know that, I believe the response in that document was that they receive public funds, I'm assuming, but I don't want to make it, uh, an assumption that they have to follow all federal guidelines as far as like protections that exist for special education students with these non-public, um, programs that we have for them.
Sure, I'm going to invite Mark Andrews because I don't want to give technical, I want to give you the technical response. So Mark, can you provide just a quick technical response to that in terms of funds?
In terms of the special education funding coming through non-public would be primarily coming from the Department of, um, the State Department, Maryland State Department of Education and they fund approximately between thirty-five to thirty-eight percent of the non-public funding. Um, recent changes in the last several years was House Bill four, four, eight around the parity act where they were trying to increase the non-public salaries up to, uh, the level of our district. Um, the disadvantage of that is that our district, uh, have union employees a- and, and they are not unionized employees. So there was some question around unfair salary equalizations of that, um, bill. But, uh, it has been implemented. I think it's in the second year and it's in the process of trying to raise those salaries up to similar levels as our um, unionized, uh, salaried employees, thereby producing an increase in our non-public expense because as their salaries go up, our non-public expense goes up as well.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Andrews. And I think that they're really just quick question, um, and also happy to have it offline if it's not here. It's just, it, the protections that exist in the public schools for special education students also exist in these non-public programs. Is that correct? I think I see Ms. Bowman shaking her head, yes.
Yes, that is correct. Okay, and we, and we have staff that follow our students. So while our students are there, we have staff that check in on all of our students that are in non-public placements.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Um, I believe I saw board member Walker's hand raised. Board member Walker, did you lower your hand? Okay, board member Brown.
Yes, thank you so much, Dr. White. I just had one question regarding the funding and maybe you can assist on this. So the, my question is, um, is a ten point three million dollar increase in special education funding, do you believe that it's sufficient to meet the needs of a growing population of students with disabilities, given the projected enrollment increase? Um, because I heard you mention Pointer Ridge. Of course, now they have an autism program. Um, are we able to ensure that the funding prioritizes those direct services that are needed, uh, such as hiring more support staff or expanding accessibility resources? Thank you.
No problem. Our budget process allows us the opportunity to come forth with what we believe, um, we can function off for, for the next year. Uh, and we have put in our budget and we, uh, if this budget passes, we have asked for the positions that we think we need going into fiscal year twenty-six. Uh, we know that currently with the vacancies we have and then how hard it is to secure a special education, I wouldn't want to come to this budget asking for more than what I think we need. Um, simply because we want to fill what we have and we believe if we can do that, then we will be fine. The other thing to note that the more we put to special education, it's maintenance of effort. So whatever we spend, we must maintain. So right now, we believe that what we've put in and what Superintendent House has put before you will allow us to do what we need to do.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, uh, board member Moss.
Yeah, thank you so much. Um, two quick questions. Um, I, I had a question around autism specialist FTEs. Look like, looks like we've consistently had six from FY twenty-four, twenty-five and twenty-six. So I kind of want to lean on my colleague's question around, do you think that's enough? I know we saw a growing population of autism students over the last ten years. Um, and then, you know, I'm really excited about the family engagement center who's doing good work to connect with families, uh, when they feel displaced in the special education process. Um, I'm, I'm curious if you think you could use an additional FTE in that community as well, but overall, thank you. But those are my two questions.
Sure, no problem. So currently we did put in to increase, um, for our autism. Every year we come asking until we can get the number to where we know it will be a flush one-to-one. Know that all of our programs are covered. What we do is we, specialists that are assigned to those programs may split and go between two programs, but all programs are covered and that is their only work. So it's not like they're in my department doing other things and they check in. That is their sole job, but they may have two. I think we have a plan over the next, I think we spread it out over the next five years to where they'll all have their own. So we do have a plan and Superintendent has been supporting, um, the addition to those positions each year. Um, to your second question, again, the Maryland Board of Education, um, has us aligned funds for one position. Our district currently has four. I would never say we have enough ones. Talked about parent engagement of over a hundred and thirty-some thousand students. What I can say though is we have plenty of things in place. Um, we have parent engagement specialists in, um, mostly the, all of our schools to help with us. We work with them. Um, we did a big push last year. We currently in the four that we have to make sure they're assigned. Uh, my team will go back to the table to figure out how we can align them to certain clusters, um, so that we can be more efficient in the work. And the other thing that we had that I didn't have a chance to mention with you all last week is an SEIS. So there's a special educator from our department that's assigned to every single school that engages with the school to help move and support the work of the school and of families. Um, their caseload, if it's a CSI school, is usually around eight. For a non-CSI school, it's usually around twelve. Um, what we can do as we go into this year is really look at, as I know special ed is the, the big topic, we're working on it through multiple committees, is to look and make sure that we analyze how many parent concerns are coming in. And I will graciously come back to this board if I feel as though we are not able to do it with what we have.
Thank you, Dr. White. Board member Boozer Struthers?
All right. Thank you so much and thank you, Dr. White and the academics team. My question is around, uh, the evening high school program. Dr. White, I saw your request that I elaborate more in the, the meeting and I think Dr. Morrow might also be able to contribute based on a recent audit committee meeting on graduation rates. The, uh, in-person evening high school, Northwestern High School, which is in my district, and there was a program in Crossland was viewed as very successful in twenty twenty, right before the pandemic. Uh, former superintendent Goldson announced that evening high school would be expanded to every high school in the coming year, which would include online educate, a blended education model with online, but the supports, those in-person supports, wraparound services at the building. We never really returned to that and, um, I, you know, I know we have an online version, but could you speak to what it might take to return to more evening supports like the old, uh, evening high school model? I'm, I don't know that that's particularly in your budget this year, but it has, it, it, I'm often asked about it because it was seen as a success in PGCPs. Thanks.
Sure. So Dr. Morrow has, um, an extensive program, actually, if it's the will of the board, as, as she does not fall under me, but she falls under Chief Davis. Um, if you'd like to yield this time to her to respond, I will graciously turn it over to her to respond to your question.
Good evening, everyone. And so, uh, we haven't done a cost analysis to see what it would cost us to return to our, um, onsite in-person, um, evening programs. It was very costly, the three evening programs that we ran. And so, um, we moved to virtual where we can actually have a program at every high school. And within that virtual program, we do have a counselor, I'm a professional school counselor, this staffed at every evening program. Um, so we are looking more at a flexible scheduling model with our CSI schools, particularly, um, Crossland, Blatonsburg and, um, Central as more of a flexible scheduling model, which is more of a need for our students that we're finding where we have students that need to work during the day and more of the evening programs and things like that. More, um, so we've looked at it in that lens more so than going back to what we used to do in terms of a evening school where we had a principal running it and so forth.
Okay, thank, thank you so much for that update. I, I appreciate the, um, you know, that we would have to look at a serious budget change to, to bring back such a model. Thank you. Thank you.
So much, Dr. Morrow. The committee chair recognized a superintendent house to present the responses to this pre-submitted questions for the Division of Budget and Management Services.
At this time, I'd like to, uh, introduce our chief, uh, chief financial officer, Lisa Howell, to, uh, to join. Lisa?
Good evening. Thank you. Um, so many of the questions that we received were around the budget book and the format of the budget book. Um, for this fiscal year, typically for our budgeting process, we produce three budget books throughout the year, two or three budget books. There's usually one proposed, requested and for the approved cycle. Uh, the proposed book, um, actually all the budget books, we're looking to make some changes to the way in which the information is shared and communicated with our constituents. It's a three hundred page document. It's a three-hundred-page document, which is easy to get lost into the details. I'm really understanding what's captured in the budget present, captured in the proposed budget. During Superintendent House's proposed budget, he walked through really the kind of the priorities for the coming school year, some of the challenges that we're facing, some of the budget impacts that are upon us, and some of the steps that we're going to take for this year in particular to help address our, the budget gap that we have. So we really use that format and that form as an opportunity to really outline the plan for this year. It is a really tight budget year. And the direction provided with the team, as Dr. White shared before earlier, is really to look within our own budgets, to see how we can reprioritize spending, to reevaluate return on investment, and to try to be able to self-fund as many of the requests for the coming year as possible. So to the extent that we were able to do that successfully, it would not necessarily be captured as a change to the overall budget, but just more of a reallocation of resources within the budget. In the spirit of trying to be more streamlined in terms of the information that we are sharing for the operating budget, there was information that was, that has been shared in the past regarding the capital budget and some of the projects. And that was essentially an excerpt from the capital budget book. What we did this year is we actually captured a link in our operating budget book to the three-hundred-page budget document for the capital budget, which provides a lot more content that we can actually incorporate and build into the operating budget. So that was not, that was a very intentional decision to try to provide a little bit more information and provide more context around the capital budgeting process, the projects, rather than taking a portion of their budget book and incorporate it into ours. Part of the information that we often find can be challenging for our constituents is the way in which we are required to have our budget presented and approved by the board, which is within the state's fifteen categories, which doesn't really tell the story as well in terms of how and when, how and where our dollars are being utilized for the coming year. There is a section, I like to kind of think about the budget book in several different sections. You've got sort of the first thirty, sixty pages or so that kind of captures really the crux of what's changing. Then you've got sort of the middle section that has all the organizational pages, which has all the details for the different divisions, which takes the key changes in the budget book and kind of builds it out. It provides more detail within each of the different divisional areas. It includes restricted and unrestricted. And then the back of the book is where we have our supplemental section, which is just additional reference information. One of the challenges with the way in which our budget is presented within the fifteen categories, it combines restricted and unrestricted. So it can make it very difficult to understand where you have changes to your operations, especially in a year where we have several of our larger grants, some of the ESR funds, another grant changes, where some of those costs or some of those dollars are burning off. So as such, your funding is decreasing year over year, which means your expenditures are decreasing correspondingly. But now we're trying to make sense of, our constituents are looking at our budget by expenditure category and trying to understand some of those changes. And so in the response document, we did break out the changes just for unrestricted. So just know that for every dollar that we get on the restricted side, there's going to be a corresponding change on the expenditures as well. So it's sort of a cost-neutral change. So in the budget book, there is a detailed outline of all the grants that we're getting for this year and those changes. But we really want to kind of break out the unrestricted portion to help folks understand how those changes are actually flowing through by the different functional categories. So that's adding some of the difficulty in being able to discern some of the year-over-year changes because it combines restricted and unrestricted. So we try to provide responses relating to that. The organizational pages in the back or in the middle section of the budget book does provide a little bit more context because each division will have their budget by all the different expenditure categories or by all the expense buckets, I should say, for unrestricted and restricted. So you could then clearly see what is changing in the bucket between the two. The other challenge with our budget book that can be difficult to understand, and we receive questions around this as well, is with regards to some of the position changes that we may have. And so oftentimes, not only is the budget process an opportunity to be able to, you know, make changes and reflect enhancements to the budget book, sometimes reductions. Sometimes we're also just moving things around. It's cost-neutral. We could be making corrections or adjustments to positions, to position titles, but it may now show up differently in the book, and so everyone's trying to understand the movement. I often like to refer to the storyteller in the budget book is in the fiscal or the highlights section because it really gives you, I refer to it as a major change page because it really highlights the major changes in the budget. And as you know, for this year, it's really just about the cost of doing business. That, those are the biggest changes that we have in this year's budget. We don't have as many enhancements. We don't have as many additions to the budget. A lot of it's just, you know, trying to keep the lights on and continue with our normal operations. And so as we're going through and trying to make the budget book more user-friendly, we want to use this as an opportunity to be in, to begin this process of phasing in some of the changes and how to want to present the information differently, so it's a bit more user-friendly. So it wasn't, we're not there yet. It's going to be a phase in process in order to do that. So some of the changes that you are beginning to see is reflective of some of those intentional decisions to present the information in a way that's a bit more user-friendly. I'm just sort of going back to some of the other questions that we received as well. There were quite a few questions that were directed to some of the different areas, and we tried to take on the response to that because, again, just trying to understand and interpret. Some of those questions can be challenging. There were a couple of questions that we received around the Office of Integrity and Compliance. As you know, that has been an unfunded mandate that is included in our budget. We do have a request in our budget as it stands now for that to be funded by the county government going forward in fiscal year 2026. There's currently a House Bill three-seventy that is currently going through the General Assembly, which would actually shift the budget responsibility of that function from the Prince George's County Public Schools over to the county government. So that is in line with what we currently have reflected in the budget. It's still in our budget, but we also have the funding there. But if this bill goes through, the cost altogether will now come out of our budget and will become a part of the county budget. So we do have that captured in there as well. There's also, there was also a section or questions about the budget book relating to the school budgeting process, which we are in the, preparing for that exercise, which begins in the March timeframe. With the changes coming for blueprints, there will be a very different process in how we go about developing our school budgets. I say very different, but more in line with what's outlined in the blueprint legislation. Our school district has always done student-based budgeting. So the way in which that we've gone through that process is similar to what the blueprint outlines. It's the metrics, however, or the demographics that's being used to allocate the funds to schools. When we produce the budget book for the requested cycle, we will have a very different student budgeting section, which outlines what that process will be for this current year. And we'll be able to share more details at that point in time. But that was another change that we're in the process of implementing that will be included in our budget book on a going-forward basis.
Thank you so much, Chief Howell. Board members, do we have any additional questions? Recognizing Chair Jackson?
Thank you so much, Dr. Howell. While you were speaking, you answered a lot of my questions. That's always great when you have a presentation to answer the questions before they even get started. But one of the questions that I did have was, was in regard to making the book more user-friendly. And one of the things that I was thinking about, like, I have a financial background, so I kind of understand the budget book, but for a lot of my constituents that may not be as familiar with, you know, finance, I can kind of come across a little bit heavy. And so to to make it a little bit more user-friendly, I was thinking about at, at minimum, when we make adjustments with inside of these different categories, even down to the line item, a lot of times you don't, you don't really understand like how, like if you, just for example, if you had a hundred thousand this year and then you have a hundred and fifty thousand this year, I think it will be helpful if you can show the delta, the difference, the fifty-thousand-dollar difference, or what percentage it goes up. It was, I think if it was like more than ten percent, I think I put in one of my questions, like if the delta is more than ten percent, could there be a justification to say, hey, listen, we we had to go up fifty thousand dollars and this is the explanation. Maybe we could put that in the supplemental information if we can't fit it all on that, you know, page where it's presented. Just so it'll pop out to us to understand like the differences in the categorical spending or even down to the line item. I think that will be helpful for us to, you know, flag like, okay, what's going on here? You know, what's the answer? Even if it's a deficit or if it's an increase, I think if it's less or more than ten percent, I think that will be good for the public to kind of understand. Because trying to follow in it, to try to follow it, you know, from a linear perspective, I know can be kind of difficult sometimes.
Yeah, thank you for that comment. And and we totally agree. When we look at the budget and you deal with it all day, every day, it's it's very, you know, it makes sense to us. But it's not something that's really easy to kind of understand and really be able to kind of take, again, the big highlights of what's changing and see how that flows throughout the budget. And so we are looking to make a better connection within those categories. And perhaps including that percentage or that dollar absolute change year-over-year could be something else that's incorporated. I think what's really helpful with that as well is to really be able to say, if we have an increase in textbooks, and it's, this is the reason why, which functional category does it show up in? So now you can make the connection that, okay, our, our lease purchase is going up. It includes textbooks, includes buses, includes non-buses, and includes technology to see where that flows through on that major, on the expenditure by category, because you may not, our community, our constituents may not understand that technology is going to be a change maybe you see in administration. And textbooks might show up under instructional support. So there'll be different buckets.
Could you provide us the rest of the response to Chief Jackson in a, excuse me, Chair Jackson in written format so that we can all have access to it?
Sure. I mean, I was pretty much done.
Thank you. Dr. Moss?
Yeah, just a quick question for you, and you can feel free to respond in writing to me if you're not prepared tonight. I know the but the governor proposed this budget. We're expected to have a hundred and sixty-three dollars less in our per pupil funding amount. It wouldn't have been possible for you all to make this budget with that understanding. Are we making adjustments with the potential loss of a hundred and sixty-three dollars per student? I'm just curious if we're making plans to be able to do that. This just happened two days ago, so I'm not expecting a real back answer, but it did cross my mind when I read the budget, the the governor's plan.
Yep, that is definitely part of our process that we go through every year once the governor releases the budget to update our revenue assumptions. We have a pretty good process for developing our projected revenues based off our student counts, and then the amounts that we get per student is already outlined in legislation. This is obviously a proposed change to those per people amounts. They are looking to hold firmless the special education per people amount, but all the others would be impacted accordingly. So we are modeling out the impact of what that would mean in terms of total dollar value and to see how that impacts our budget. But we'll certainly have to make adjustments based off of the proposed budget or based off of this proposed legislation. We'll have to see what happens coming through the General Assembly, but we'll need to be prepared to respond to what the additional changes we would have to make if this becomes law. So a lot more to come on that. There's some other things pending as well that which could swing this the other way. There's been some other changes with regards to retirement and some other cost impacts that would impact us as well as the county government. So there's a lot of moving parts relating to this budget cycle, which is going to make it difficult to kind of model it all out and be prepared to respond to where we end up landing once the session is over in the spring.
I appreciate you for taking a stab at that, Chief Howell. I know that just happened two days ago, so I appreciate your fortitude.
Yep.
Board Member Walker?
Okay, we're going to try to do like a crash session, me and you, Ms. Howell, real quick. I'm going to fire out some questions. I did get the responses, thank you, and then try to get through these here. You know, first, I did ask this question, and you did a good job putting it in words. However, my request is if we can make it look, if we can make it pictorial some kind of way, and I'm happy to help with this, to talk through it. But right now, the confusing piece of which I wrote is that, you know, the narrative for our budget is that Prince George's County Public Schools has sixty-two percent of the budget. What the heck are they doing with all of that money and why are they in a deficit? It all, it comes up every single year. And so I continuously ask for what in my mind might be a pie graph, but something that we pie chart, something that we can show. This is where our money is going, but also this narrative that, hey, we're increasing, the county is increasing their input to us, their their county contributions. However, we still are at a gap. And so while I see it, and you did a great job explaining it here, I want to be able to articulate it to my constituents. And I think pictorially will be a good way to do that because the loss of the telecom tax, for instance, right, is being used differently. Sixty-four million dollars is a whole lot of money, but yet there's still, someone can argue that they're still adding that to the mandatory cost that we have to give. And I want to be able to see those buckets so somebody can look at it. So I'm going to just leave that there. Maybe we can work together to put a pictorial together because that narrative legislators are asking for, communities asking for, and it'd be helpful for us to be able to help advocate this this session. You good with that? Okay, I like a pictorial, so I'm going to call you. All right, the next one is, I'm going to skip some that I understand the answer to, but I want to go down to some of the pieces of the budget by way of what we saw last year feel that they're missing, and I gave some examples of those. And so the response was just kind of like, you all will see it inside of the new budget book that's coming to the board. And I just wanted to get a timeline of what that new budget book, when that's coming out.
Yeah, so, yeah, so when we finalize the requested budget, following that is a requested budget book. So the biggest change that you will see in the requested budget book will be in the inclusion of the student budgeting, excuse, excuse me, the student budgeting section, which is not in there currently. And that will outline, as I said before, a lot of the changes around the blueprint and the funding and how we're developing our school budgets based on that.
Okay, thank you. My time is up, but I do want to request Board Member Jackson, if we can have another round with Ms. Howell. This is like the, one of the largest pieces of business and management for our budget. Thank you.
Board Member Boozer Struthers, my apologies.
All right, thank you so much. Ms. Howell, thank you so much for all of your responses to our concerns about the actual, sort of, the data presentation this year. Mine gets to also, as Chair Jackson said, more more visuals and as Board Member Walker said, to it really explain that funding adequacy gap. Because one thing we, we don't often do at this time period is really explain that what the Thornton Commission identified, what the Kerwin Commission was asked to do, which is, the question was, what's, what's the educational adequacy funding gap in this state? And the answer was like three billion dollars a year. And it included the programs that were now mandated to do, which are great, universal pre-K. Those are new costs, but the, but the, but that gap of what educational adequacy for a student in Prince George's County, we never show that, and it's thousands of dollars. And we know that from the Thornton Commission. We know that from the Kerwin Commission. So I think we owe it to our constituents to understand what that means and what we as board members are challenged with in these, these budgets. I think we've done a great job of it with capital. We've labeled that dollar amount we need every year. And we can show the gaps in the requests and then that that we're not funded at the request we put in. That one's easy. It wasn't easy, but it's easy now. We have it. Director Jackson, I know how hard that work was. But we don't have it for the annual operating and why the Kerwin Commission existed and why there's a blueprint for Maryland's future law. And that is, that's the visual that I I really, really want us to show the county. Thank you.
Yes, thank you for that comment. And we agree. I mean, it's, it's been a challenge with really being able to kind of tell the story for our county. And we have been faced with some challenges that most of the LAAs have faced, in addition to some of our own that are more local and specific to our district. And so really being able to kind of differentiate in the impact that we are facing, whether it is the impact of the energy telecom, whether it is the fact that special education and transportation are sorely underfunded, and we're trying to use funds from other buckets to kind of cover, meet those needs. And we have a lot of different impacts associated with our operating budget on a going-forward basis. And so I agree that Um and so I agree that being able to kind of really help provide that visual of what that looks like, not only for the current year, but for the years, uh first, future years um throughout the remainder of the blueprint implementation through twenty thirty-two.
Thank you so much, Chief Hal, just wanting to let board members know you do have the opportunity to ask two questions. Currently, we have Board Member Briggs, but if anybody else had an additional question, now is the time to raise your hand. Board Member Briggs?
Thank you so much, Committee Chair, going some cans. Um and Ms. Howell, thank you so much for the presentation. Um and I just want to say in advance with this question that you might not be able to answer right now and it's uh perfectly fine. I'm happy to send it to you after, but I do want to say it for the record and if you're the right person also for this question. Um so I've been hearing from uh charters in the community about just some of the challenges that exist with changes in the blueprint. You, I see you shaking your head, so you likely know about that. Um I just want to give some context in previous budgets. Um the charters were explicitly included in a section called Charter School Funding aligned with the two thousand and five City Neighbors Court Decision. Um this year, that section was absent from the proposed budget. Um I think you know that the blueprint calculation shifted funding calculations from a straight uh forward per pupil allocation to one based on student demographics. So that follows like foundational costs, English language learners, special education, et cetera, et cetera. Um and so some traditional charter schools have received less funding than they did in FY twenty-four contrary to um really, I think the stated intent of the legislation. And then um the um State Board introduced the concept of a special education overage. Um defined as the gap between special education revenue and the actual costs borne by the district. Um but the superintendent's FY twenty-six budget does not address how the overage will be calculated. And I was just curious if you could speak to any of that and I have some like additional follow follows, but I know I'm a minute and a half in. So I wanted to see if you had any answers to any of that.
Yeah, so I'll start with the commensurate funding with charter schools. And it is a challenge as, you know, we're going through this implementation of blueprint and what that means. Because you have, you know, law that supports the charter schools and ensuring that they receive funding that's commensurate with what our traditional schools receive. And then you also have blueprint legislation which mandates how much funding should be provided to the schools as well. Not necessarily the same thing, because there could be non-blueprint funding streams that that are not necessarily tied to that minimum school funding. And so for the charters, it's important that they're receiving that funding that's commensurate with what our traditional schools receive. Um so with that being said, um in terms of the funding that's calculated for schools and that they receive, we follow the um blueprint legislation, which is basically as you outline on demographics. And that is what drives the funding um for the schools. For fiscal year twenty twenty-five, when we developed the budgets uh for the charters, we actually held them harmless. Um as we're going through this transition of blueprint, so to the extent we went through that calculation and the funding um ended up being less than what they received in the previous year, we held them harmless to make sure that they were in a position to be successful for twenty twenty-five. I could talk about this for twenty-five minutes, so I will stop right here now.
Um Board Member Briggs, I know your time is up, if you have additional questions, we can have somebody record it for you.
I'll send it in writing to, yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Board Member Walker?
Yes, I'm just um waiting on, I don't know, um uh Chair Jackson is okay with a second round for this uh for Ms. Howell?
Yeah, absolutely.
Oh, thank you so much. Um so this is a fire round again, I didn't do real good on my fire round last time. All right, so um the Office of Integrity and Compliance, and so that the House Bill three seventy. Um while I recognize that we are strong supporters of that moving through, in the event it doesn't, I just wanted to, and I know you can't commit to it right here, but I just wanted to talk to the administration as you all go through for cost savings opportunities. Thirty-seven million is a lot of money to try to find inside of this budget when we know that we need every single penny. With that said, um to increase by one FTE um is a lot for not having seen um results as of yet. They're building and they have four total FTEs as of right now. And so I think that should be an opportunity to take a look at as well as the other staffing opportunities that we're going to look at for this budget cycle. So while I don't expect you to commit today, I did just want to put on record that um I think that you all can take a look at that as a cost saving measure as we move into um trying to reduce by thirty-seven million.
I will just say that the legislative way that it's currently written is very clear and it says that the budget shall be included in our school systems budget. So we certainly have had discussions around the request as we did with every office that submitted a budget. Um but the, but the legislation doesn't give much flexibility to not include what is needed for the operations of this function. But we're certainly continuing to take um that under advisement.
Absolutely, thank you so much, we gotta make our choices this time, absolutely, even without programming, absolutely. Um the other piece that um I wanted to add on to is the, sorry, I missed that one. Um oh, if we can just, if you could just add a little more detail here, I didn't know if when you talked about office supplies, because the office supplies increased by about one point seven million dollars. And I know that it says that it was a placeholder to align the mid-level administration category, I didn't know what that meant, what does that mean?
Yeah, so that's another part of the budgeting process that can be difficult to understand in the budget book. Um so oftentimes, we want to make sure that we've got the budget earmarked. That will be utilized and further itemized as we get further along in the budgeting process. So that is an example of funds that we earmarked that is going to be set aside for school-based budgeting. And so right now, it's just a placeholder that we had to put in one of the fifteen functional categories in a particular object. And that's where it's currently sitting as we actually work on the student, uh the uh school level budget, that will be further itemized.
Thank you.
Hal. Chair Jackson?
Thank you, Committee Chair, um real quick, my question uh is, I I wanted to finish this up on my last question was, um while we work to making um the budget book more user-friendly, I think uh if we decide to like um, you know, start from a blank blank canvas and reconfigure the the template. Um so uh that we make it more user-friendly, could we have a um? I would like to be a part of that, like as far as like allowing us to see what that template will look like, how the budget is presented. I think if we will be able to have like a partnership with that, I think that'll be really good. Um especially having other board members who may not have that financial background, because sometimes we may be so close to it. Um that it makes sense to us before like the average or layman person who may not be financially like inclined. I think it will be good to have different sets of eyes on it. Uh so I just want to see if we can play a part in um developing uh a newer format when the budget book comes out next year.
Sure, I appreciate that partnership.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Jackson, seeing no more raised hands. The Committee Chair recognizes Superintendent House to present the responses to the pre-submitted questions for the Division of Communications.
Sorry, are you muted?
My apologies, at this time, I I uh I'll ask that uh Luis Morales in our Communications Department uh come off mute and and share his uh his budget and questions.
Good evening, board members, and thank you for this opportunity to address your questions. The Division of Communications and Community Engagement is home to the Strategic Communications, Multimedia, Web Services, Translation and Interpretation, and Family and Community Partnerships offices. This year, we took a deep dive into our budget to find cost-neutral adjustments that would best support the communications plan presented to the Board of Education in October of twenty twenty-four, which is also available online. As you may know, our division supports over two hundred schools, all divisions, the offices superintendent, and emergency communications for our district. Our budget includes priorities in improving efficiency, communication strategies, and increased outreach to PGCPs, communities, families, and students. Um to highlight some of the questions that we received and some of the answers, uh we got questions, uh the first question is around what the current assessment was of the Family and Community Partnerships Office now being in the division for two years. Um I think it was just Board Member Boozer Strutter uh stated that it always made more sense to her that it was in the school support and leadership office due to the critical issue of principal and parent partnerships. Um and we appreciate that question and we do work very closely with the school's office for that very reason, still to this day. Um but what we found of Board Member Boozer Strutter in the current assessment of the second year, we find that there's actually been significant improvements and there is a synergy that has been created because we are able to work together uh to strategically amplify the work of the department and the many wheels that are turning within it. Um and they also influence our communication strategy, we get that feedback in real time and we're able to make adjustments. It doesn't have to be filtered through another party. Um but then also again, keeping that collaboration with schools. And so the documented answer is a bit more robust, but in general, um we are seeing improvements, there is a synergy, it is more strategic. Uh we're seeing amplification of the work, we're seeing that in those that are attending. And um you know, I think one of the things I presented in the communications plan is is the parent organizations and the potential to see increase there as well. So that's one of, really one of our driving goals, because it goes back to that informed autonomy that our schools need and our parent organizations need. Um and you know, you know, I'm very big on templates and supplying folks with what they need. Uh because we, you know, that's a lot of work for this division, I know the division seems large, but for a district of this size, um it is, it's it's a lot for for this group, but we're building the processes necessary to create a consistency within that division. Um the next question was about uh moving an unidentified FTE under Family and Community Partnerships uh to federal programs budget restricted funds. And we essentially highlight that we work and currently engage over thirty-five thousand trained and screened volunteers, a hundred and fourteen business partners, a hundred and two parent engagement assistants at ninety-nine schools that directly support family and community engagement, trainings and activities at any one of our schools. Um and so this request for us uh would not necessarily align with our current needs and assessment of the work that we're doing. And then our next question that we received was seeking clarification around the five hundred thousand allocated for technical contracted services under the interpreting and translation office. And um again here, we have some some uh federally mandated language access resources for school-based and systemic communication uh with linguistically diverse families across the district that we access through that line item. And actually, what we did thanks to finance this year um is we actually reflected what what is more accurate. In previous years, that number, I believe, has been lower. Um but we always have to find a way to supplement what has, what it has actually cost us by the end of the year. And so what we're proposing is in alignment with what is actually being spent um on these services. We also had a question around the increase in technical services, contracted services uh within our budget of two hundred and sixty uh thousand. And so the increase to two hundred and sixty thousand is a result of realignment of funds previously approved by the Board of Education in FY twenty-five for one survey software platform. Um and we did realign those funds because of the feedback that we've heard from internal and external stakeholders. And so part of that was, and you all have heard it in different settings, you know, um stop talking at us, you know, talk with us, work with us. And so what we realized is we need to prioritize the tools that allow that and facilitate that kind of relationship. And so that includes things like our website, AI Chatbot, the telephonic employee town halls, updating our equipment to produce high-quality content that's more engaging. Um that we've also uh worked to supply uh at different instances across the district, including the board office. And then uh professional development for staff at all levels, we're asking there to be a line shift within this department to maximize return on investment, to maximize efficiencies. Um and we're supplying new tools and new software to do that. And so while we're asking for that, we have to make sure that we support our staff in the way that's needed so that they understand the tools that they're handed. Um in addition to some project management software, which has really already seen a tremendous increase in efficiency for the numerous requests that we receive. Um if you recall, the presentation that was given of the communications plan highlighted what we already do annually. Um and it did not highlight the many hundreds of requests that come in aside from those things. But this new software has really streamlined it to where it has decreased wait times, it has increased accountability, and we really have a better accounting of the requests that are coming in and from where. Uh along with media reporting tools and media management tools that allow us to make more targeted pitches um to uh in our media relations office and also create robust lists to make sure that we are trying to push our narrative as hard as possible um with our with our external partners and also be able to report internally the benefits that we're seeing, the change in sentiment, that kind of thing that is usually outlined in our quarterly reports. Um and what we did find though to address the shift is that before we did that, we um did look at our Google Forms use and whether or not that platform that we've used historically to collect data has still proven to be effective. And it has, I mean, we saw it most recently with our climate and culture survey where participation rose. Um so I think it's less about the platform and more about the kinds of questions that we're asking and and the format in which we're presenting this information. And so our team, I've empowered the team to really uh be the experts in the room when they're at these tables to say, maybe we can ask this question a bit differently to maximize um those kind of of survey um opportunities. The next question centered on explaining the twenty-two FTEs in strategic communications. And so I really appreciated this question, because one of the things I've been working with Office of Finance on is actually separating out this big balloon that is communications right now. So right now, what it embodies um is not only our strategic communications office, it embodies our multimedia and our web services. And so what that means is what you're seeing there is grouped um expenses and costs for a lot of different functions under one function. So the example I listed here was, you know, when you look at technical contracted services, that included a five hundred and ten thousand dollar spend just to host our website and those pages.
Thank you so much, Chief Morales. Um in the interest of time, we're going to move to board member questions. Um if we cut off any of your uh responses and answers to those, uh Dr. Moss?
Yeah, um Luis, I appreciate your response to that question, I'm gonna give you the balance of my time to finish it because it was my question. And I believe you were going somewhere with explaining twenty-two FTE, so you can have my two minutes and twenty seconds to do that.
Thank you, Dr. Moss, um and I'm actually almost done, it 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 just encompasses, um we have about five web specialists, we have a web director, we have a media relations office, they had two positions. Um actually, a third position that was more internal communications. It also houses our our director. And uh when you look at multimedia, we have about three, um I forget the exact titles, but that's why we call it multimedia. They essentially all focus on content development at different levels, um including our our TV channel, you know, our or our website, all all those things. So right now, those twenty-two FTEs are actually spread pretty thin across those three functions. Um but it is not all solely media relations and strategic communications is what I wanted to make sure we understood.
Yeah, appreciate that. Um I think it would be helpful for me um at some point that we can see this reorder, because when we think about uh Board Member Walker's concern earlier, when we think about how to cut some of this out of the budget so we can make sense of the uh of the things that we have to do. I I think it would be helpful, but before we move forward anymore with this, for this section of the budget, is to be able to see that laid out and how these folks, these positions are going to be used. And I want to make sure I say to the public um that this is um Chief Morales's eighth and ninth day perhaps in this role of leading the division. So it also gives an opportunity uh for you to kind of put a spin on where you want to go with this. But I would like to see this a bit more, bit more defined, uh twenty-two FTEs undefined to to me um seems bloated a bit, but hearing you say that it's actually not what it's perceived to be, I think it's super helpful. But I think it's also an opportunity for you to um to do that as we go into this budget cycle. Uh I too have concerns around how we're gonna plug the budget and so when I see something undefined, I think it's a great opportunity to cut it.
And if I may, um they are defined, I do have that readily available to to hand to you. And um the other thing I will say is when we looked at this to make the cost-neutral adjustments, we did exactly what you're talking about. We looked at the whole org and there are some proposed um eliminations, including one open vacant position in media relations, because I don't think we needed to justify the current workload.
Thank you so much, Chief Morales. I do not see any hands, oh, there we go, Board Member Walker?
Hey there, thanks so much, I'm just gonna use this opportunity to ask a general question, so it's under Luis's uh question, but I think it's for everyone. I think what I'm hearing today is that these questions are being answered, but really you're, the next step is for you to flesh out even a little bit more so that we can be able to see the questions in detail. So a lot of these questions are around, can you give me, can you help me understand X? Can you help me understand what X is or why? Is it true that from now, you're gonna go back and look at that? I think it was Chief Howell that was saying that, actually, from now, you're gonna go back and do this revised budget so that in our question twos, then they make more sense that we could dig a little bit deeper, do I understand that correctly? Any chief can answer.
Sorry, I was on mute, um so, I mean, we are gonna be
Sorry, I was on mute. Um, so I mean, we are going to be going through a process as we do every year.
Yeah.
To update our budget based off of a change in revenue and we're still continuing to work through the resetting of our budget and identifying our budget reductions. So we can be in a position to present the next budget that will be included for the board to vote on, that's going to be transmitted over to the county. So that's kind of the next phase of where we are. Uh, but in terms of further clarification, I think the goal of this meeting is. Any questions that we're not able to respond to during this setting. Um, should be captured in follow ups and then we can provide those responses. In Friday, I'm not sure if that.
Yeah, so in the remainder of my time. Um, the reason why I asked this question, so I'm familiar with the process that we've leveraged for the past two years, at least while I've been here and been kind of looking on before then. So I get that piece of the budget. This time feels a little different. It feels like there's some pieces that didn't quite make it yet. That at least for me, I'm looking to use those in order to help ask these detailed questions. And it looks like, and it's okay, that there's additional work that needs to be done. So now inside of my step two, my questions two. I guess what I'm asking is, is there any work between now and the time where we ask our second round of questions? To be able to delve a little bit deeper where we can ask questions that might be able to get an answer that's not quite overviewish. Did I? Is the question understood?
If you're looking for more clarity in a specific area where it might be better to have maybe a one on one with an individual chief or a certain area. I think there's an opportunity to do that. It just depends on what you're looking for in terms of additional.
Yeah, so for instance. For instance, for Chief Morales, um, the even just the answer you just gave about the F T Es breakout, I would expect that to have been inside of this session that we talked about right here inside of the budget book. So that we, that wouldn't even be a question because we were so crystal clear. Those type of breakdowns of F T Es have previously been provided. Or the waiting um, for our pupils that I asked about. Anyway, I'll just wait. It just feels a little different this year, but thank you.
Your time is up, but I do want to reiterate what she. Uh, what Board Member Walker has said, just an, an ask for everyone to give us that clarity on those info- that information. Chief Jackson. Excuse me, Chair Jackson, my apologies.
No problem, no problem. Um, so, so question, uh, I guess a question for uh, clarity from um, Chief Morales. Is um. I'm, I'm trying to better understand, uh, well, I'll say I'll start with as we in effort of, you know, maximizing the, the, the money that we do have right now. And um, streamlining processes, I I want to better understand the, the line of demarcation between. Um, community partnerships. And uh, I think it's called the foundation. And I wanted to know like how, how you guys interact with each other and what's like. Cause I, I, I don't understand um. Like what is the line of demarcation? And then is there opportunity to uh, for synergy? Um, or perhaps to even um, consolidate. Uh, those different entities and maybe that could save F T Es. Um, just a question, if you can just help me better understand that. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. I appreciate that question. So as you know, I was interim chief for the past five months and now associate superintendent for the last month or so. Um, that is part of what I really have spent the bulk of my last five months trying to understand to make sure we were clear in doing things the proper way. Cause my background is in nonprofit work, um, a portion of it. And so one, is there potential for synergy? Absolutely, there is. And we're currently working on that. Um, in terms of clarifying processes, developing process maps, so everyone is clear across the district when we're approached because what we find. Is we are an access point. People come to volunteer with us, they come to see the work we're doing. They get our department, family, community uh, partnerships to host the drives and they provide things directly to our families. And so that tends to be the point in which they see the, what we're doing, they see what the schools are doing and they want to get involved with us. And so what we're looking at now is um, when that becomes a monetary situation or an in kind situation. Based on the current A P, what is that process? And that current process is very clear, but at the request of the foundation. We are looking at adjusting that process to better facilitate a transition between. Family and community partnerships and the foundation. So there's absolutely opportunity for synergy um, in that area.
And just with, with a second, and maybe you could submit this to me later is um, do you think there's opportunity to um, consolidate some of those F T Es?
Thank you so much, uh, Chair Jackson. Uh, can we definitely get uh, that question recorded so that we can get an answer? And then turning it over to Superintendent House. Again, to uh, give us the presentation from the Division of Operations.
Thank you, ma'am. I'd like for my Chief Operating Officer, Sharasta Coleman, uh, Dr. Sharasta Coleman to come off mute and and share.
Thank you, Superintendent House. Good evening, Board Chair Jackson, Committee Chair Goines McCants, Board Members, Superintendent House, Staff and Members of the Public. Uh, thank you for this opportunity to go into further detail regarding the proposed operating budget for fiscal year uh, two thousand twenty six. The mission of the Division of Operations is to provide safe, healthy and welcoming environments for students, staff and the community. While efficiently and safely transporting students and providing appealing nutritious meals daily. To accomplish this mission, the division strives to adhere to the highest standards of customer service. Uh, so let me skip down to our questions. Uh, the proposed budget has been constructed to support the essential work of operations. With respect to the follow up questions asked by board members, the first focused on our building services department's. Ability to maintain our schools, given funding constraints and the impact of decade, decades long disinvestment in P G C P S buildings. Uh, in response, uh, our building services team has increased its ability to complete work orders over the past several years. And when needed, has relied on the support of our capital programs budget to address unplanned major repairs. Uh, as they arise, as the needs arise. The funding in the F Y twenty six proposed budget. Uh, operating budget is flat uh, for maintenance when compared to this current year. But we are concerned, given that the projected separate capital budget is significantly lower. Which means we won't have that same capital funding available next year to support emergency repairs when they arise. The next question uh, asked we- whether hub stops from transportation. Uh, will be implemented for specialty programs to improve on time service. Uh, we've also been thinking about this as an option. So transportation is working. Uh, with community partners to explore the possibility of establishing hub stops. Uh, one of the in, kind of uh. Uh, inside conversations that Director Baldwin and I have been having about it is we also have to maintain an eye on equity. Uh, because even when you create a hub stop in a community, it, it still um, requires those family members to get to the hub stop. Uh, so that's something that we have to consider, especially when we're talking about our specialty programs. Uh, keeping with transportation, the next question asked, what transportation action plan areas will be the focus for uh, F Y twenty six? And should we be budgeting more for compensation to fill driver vacancies? Uh, so again, transportation will be refining the first five priorities uh, uh, from the uh, audit. Uh, that was completed by Formative while in, while expanding on the recommendation six. Uh, diversifying our model and vendor mix. We've already uh, started the process of in, including additional. Uh, vendor support that's actually scheduled to start at the beginning of February or continue in the beginning of February. And we've already included the uh, non C D L drivers uh, in our fleet and we're looking to expand uh, that fleet. Uh, by a factor of two uh, 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 to, to fifty, uh, excuse me, from eighteen to thirty vans. Uh, recommendation seven, strengthen our organizational capabilities through strategic staffing and recommendation. Again, we're working with our human resources partners around what we can do. Uh, to support the uh, filling of the vacancies that we have on our drivers as well as our uh, bus attendants. Uh, that may include uh, increases in opportunities for bonuses that could include retention bonuses. And we're exploring those options with human resources. Uh, revise operational pre- processes for efficiency and clarity. Uh, again, we're looking and working with a task force that started in November of last year. Around how we can streamline our registration and enrollment processes, especially with an eye on our specialty programs. Uh, so that we can ensure that our transportation team uh, that schedules students gets the information early enough in the summer. Uh, that they can provide a seamless uh, service for our families in the fall. Uh, the next question is focused on state legislation calling for the two phase in- installation of menstrual cycle dispensers. In high schools and middle schools by August first, twenty twenty five. Uh, we have implemented at this point. Uh, the phase one uh, to be in full compliance with the law. However, the grant that funded. Uh, the phase one implementation is no longer available and the estimated cost to comply with phase two of the mandate is over five hundred thousand dollars. Uh, and that's for the purchase of the equipment. Uh, so we, that funding is not a part of the current F Y twenty five approved budget. Uh, and we will need to continue to work through the F Y twenty six budget request uh, in order to meet that requirement. The next question focuses on the vacancy rate and staffing needs in the Department of Capital Programs. Uh, this vacancy rate is in relation to the non operating budget under the Capital Projects Fund. Uh, so really, there's only one. Uh, F T E for capital programs that's in the operating budget and that position is currently filled. Um, so we, I went back and looked at uh, the verbiage in the budget book and it is a little misleading. Uh, because those vacancies actually reside on the capital side. And so we're going to go in in subsequent. Uh, budget books and reflect that data point uh, so that it's clear to the public. Uh, keeping with capital projects, uh, there was a question asked about uh, how we deal with inflation. Uh, and so in a did, in, in, for instance, Camp Schmidt, uh, which was priced at as a project, uh, where we had secured funding. But as we know, uh, that project, uh, now we had to change the scope given the increased costs. Uh, so capital programs provided a detailed response to this question because it has many facets. Uh, so we look forward to going into that response during this Q and A period. Uh, food and nutrition services, uh, there was a question asked around whether we filled the vacancy. Uh, that was the Director of Food and Nutrition Services position. Uh, that vacancy has been filled. I'm happy to announce that. Uh, the director is Ms. Mary Kirkland. She's actually on the call. Uh, she's already doing a fantastic job and we're excited to have her. Uh, now that we have that position filled, we still are dealing with several vacancies that are critical to our, to that uh, department. Uh, specifically the nutrition specialist one and nutrition, nutrition specialist two uh, roles remain ve- open. Um, the second half of the question from the board member. Uh, was related to the non dairy milk alternatives initiative. Uh, and again, we are excited. Uh, and I've had meetings with members of the board regarding this uh, initiative during uh, this current fiscal year. Uh, we remain committed to this effort, uh, but we really need to fill those nutrition specialist positions. So we're focusing there. And once we have those positions in place, we'll be ready to uh, look more closely uh, at the possibilities about uh. Uh, following up on the non dairy milk initiative. And finally, uh, there was a question related to uh, building services specifically. Uh, how's the department working to keep up with work order demands given the limited resources? Um, and so building services has been able to over the last several years and I meant, as I mentioned earlier. Uh, to complete more worker orders uh, annually. Uh, but despite this fact. Uh, we've talked many times about the fact that P G C P S has the second largest. And second oldest portfolio of buildings in the state of Maryland, uh, and that our average building age is approximately forty years old. Uh, so given this challenge, our capital programs department has focused on consolidating. Facilities across our school district where possible, uh, so that we can have more of our students in newer. Uh, more modern buildings that relieve the maintenance burden uh, and shuttering these buildings. Uh, that have become prohibitively expensive to maintain, repair and renovate. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Dr. Coleman. Board members, do we have any questions? Board Member Boozer Struthers.
Yeah, thank you so much. I know I usually focus on these big dollar amounts, but I'm going to go down to that five hundred thousand dollars for menstrual product dispensers, which is a state law. So we just heard that there's a state law, you know, this, this unfunded mandate. We just heard that when we were told we have an unfunded mandate for the O I C. That we need to find the money, but what we're saying here with this. State law uh, for menstrual project, products for our middle school, high school students that. That it's like optional, like if we have a grant or not. So. I'm, I'm trying to understand that rationale because uh, it, it's my understanding we should be. Funding this from the operating budget. Thank you.
So Board Member, you are correct. Um, we, it is the responsibility of the L E A um, to comply. Uh, with the law uh, out of our operating dollars. So there was not. Uh, an attached funding source beyond the grant that we utilized for phase one uh, to be compliant by August of. Uh, twenty twenty five. And so we're working uh, with the CFO to identify. Uh, how we will fund the equipment that is needed to be in compliance as well as the ongoing costs. Of supplying these dispensers once they've been affixed in each of the locations.
Yeah, I, I appreciate uh, hearing that we will be in compliance. This is really important. Um, but I think it also just calls out. Um, you know, getting to what Board Member Walker raised is that. You know, these are the exactly the kind of. You know, impacts on our students when we have unfunded mandates for duplicative. Uh, offices in the school system like the O I C. So. I mean, I just want to pause for a moment and and, you know, this is a, a really clear example for the public to understand. When this board is questioning certain mandated expenses that don't directly impact the students in the way this, this bill did. Um, thank you.
Thank you so much, Board Member Boozer Struther. I don't know what happened to the timer that was on the screen. But I do want to make sure if that is a question that we need answered. Um, we will get, not if it is a question, we definitely need an answer to that question. If you had further follow up for us. Dr. Coleman, please give us that in writing.
Yes.
Thank you. Board Member Walker.
Dr. Coleman, thank you so much for your explanations. Listen, I just want to yield my time to you to go in a little bit further on. Um, the, the inflation. So can you, and I do know, thank you guys for writing up that whole one pager. I'm in a process of reading it now. I, I do appreciate it. I'm not joking. I'm serious. I'm going to read it thoroughly. I would like to give that to you just to talk about. What are we going to be doing going forward? The gap for Camp Schmidt, which services everyone is fifteen million dollars. And you priced it out the correct way. It's just with time, inflation, all of the things. We're fifteen million dollars short. Of what was approved already for the design. So we have to make some changes, which don't necessarily gift us the expansiveness that we need for our scholars. So thanks, just on what we're going to be doing for, because this is a big gap that's not just here, but a lot of other places.
Yeah, thank you so much, uh, Board Member Walker. I'm going to uh, refer or defer to our Director of Capital Programs. Uh, uh, Sheila Taylor, Sheila Jackson, uh, to speak to this point because it is something that touches not just Camp Schmidt, but other areas as well.
All right, good afternoon. So yeah, yes, it does. Um, and there's just that general note that the construction costs between twenty seventeen and twenty twenty two even. Increased fifty seven percent like across the board. So yes, um, Camp Schmidt definitely felt that, but it's not even all inflation. A lot of it is regulation changes, like the stormwater management requirements. Um, at Camp Schmidt, there's some other regulation requirements where, you know, we would leave them on separate in the past that doesn't work um. In today's climate. So there's multiple things that increased Schmidt. Besides just that massive hyperinflation number, but led to an increase on top of that. What we did do with Schmidt, just, just so you know, is what we standardly do when we have an ability to do it. And you know, Schmidt. Was a little bit before like the big projects like Sutland High School and um, even Cool Springs coming up. So there wasn't as. Yet as a major draw on every year's capital budget like Sutland is. But so we, we asked for more money. Um, we did get a part of an increase from the county. I think that was maybe two years ago. And then we actually petitioned the state for a special consideration based on the unique nature of Schmidt. To in, consider increasing their participation. They evaluated it and they ultimately um, denied it. Which is where we're kind of left with that last thing we can do, which is really go back, look at our scope, see if there's something we can value engineer. Does that, do I keep going?
Thank you so much for um. If you could finish your, finish that sentence, just so we have the full thought and the rest of it provided to us in written format.
And then after that, we either tried to de-scope um, with materials, beans and methods, or we try to come up with a phase two and then have to figure out. How to seek funding for that phase two without pushing back another priority project, which would have to happen through the E F M P process.
Thank you so much. Dr. Moss.
Um, thank you so much. Uh, Dr. Coleman, I, I'd like to yield my time to talk about the local hub system that you're exploring and what progress we're making on it. I believe Board Member Boozer Struthers um, raised this in the questions. Uh, I think it's a good opportunity to highlight to the public some of the enhancements we are trying to make. In terms of transportation. So I'd love to, to raise that question publicly.
Yeah, thank you so much. I'll, I'll defer to our Director of Transportation. Yeah, thank you so much. I'll, I'll defer to our Director of Transportation, Director Baldwin, in just a moment. But I will say that we have definitely been exploring not just the consolidation of bus stops to make our trips more efficient, but also looking at how we can address the longer trips that are, that are represented by our specialty programs, right? Those are typically our third-tier schools. They're also our schools with our broadest catchment areas and therefore their longest ride times. So how do you cut down on that ride time? Create hub stops? How do you, so that we can more efficiently get children to school from these further distances? The challenge is that shifts some of the, I'll put some of the onus on families to get the children to the hub stops as opposed to a walkable stop. And so when I speak of equity, we just have to be very careful about how we implement it in the face of efficiency. Director Baldwin, I'll turn it over to you to add some additional color.
Thank you, Dr. Coleman. As we begin our conversations about hub stops and looking at that question, how do we balance it between programs and locations? We are actively in conversation with partners, community partners, on identifying potentially safe areas, both for our AM and PM drop-off for students. And so we are excited about what we're trying to do. I think the, the input and the request is, is warranted. And we have some of our community partners that are excited about hearing some of this. So we are hoping that later we'll be able to share with you a definite plan. It's going to have to include not only the Transportation Department, but also our Specialty Department to be able to talk to families and make sure that we all understand what that expectation is when, when it comes to our hub stops.
Thank you, Director. And just with the last moment, Director Baldwin has identified a short list of schools that have shown interest in the pilot. And so we're looking to start there and then just make sure there isn't an adverse impact on access before trying to expand it further.
Thank you so much, Dr. Coleman. Board Member Brown?
Yes, I would like to yield my time to Board Member Lolita Walker in regards to the question that she had. I believe that Ms. Jackson or Dr. Jackson had more input regarding the question. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much. And again, that was a very lengthy question. So Director Jackson, if you want to continue talking about the impacts, both inflation and otherwise, that sometimes impact our ability to deliver full projects.
Sure. I feel like I kind of wrapped it up and I'm not quite sure how to jump back in. But the piece that I just wanted to emphasize was our goal is usually to try to seek more funding if it doesn't push any other project that's in the priority order. And that has been easier to do in past years where we weren't delivering quite so many schools and when our annual capital budget was a little higher. Seeing it kind of drop to almost half of where it was a few years ago and noting that at that high number, it was half of where it needed to be. We're, we're having a much more difficult time. So when something like Schmidt comes up and after we do the means and methods type engineering, which is like you still get the same result, but maybe we can use different materials or maybe we can deliver it a little differently, like using modular buildings is something we've been exploring and, and implementing. But when it comes to Schmidt, it's like, no, they, they just actually just need you to do the ORM building now. See, that's, that's when you get to cutting scope and that's a trickier decision. And when we know we can phase it later and we know it can be funded later, that's still different. But right now, when we look at our spending plan for the next five years, it's pretty well reserved for projects that are ongoing, like Sutland High School, upcoming like Cool Springs, which is ongoing. And in the pipeline, like New Northern and High Point High School. And since those are such big portions of the upcoming spending plan, it's got, it's a lot harder to make that decision with Schmidt, which is why we would like to come back to the board in the master plan process. Because at that point, it's a prioritization issue and that's where prioritization issues are discussed is in the master plan. When there's ample money available to seek additional CIP funds, that's when you see us present those type of additional funding requests within the CIP process.
Thank you so much. Was that all you had to say? You got about seven seconds left.
Yeah, I think I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Board Member Briggs?
Thank you so much, Committee Chair McGonagall. So I had a really quick question. I want to first just say that it's really exciting to hear that there's going to be the kind of the exploration of the hubs and building out that plan that seems like it'd be responsive to some of the community desire. So thank you to the team for that. I did have a conversation with a parent today, and this is just one person, but it's kind of accumulated feedback about the Stop Finder app and it being a challenge to navigate its stops. It freezes apparently for some, from someone's perspective. It hasn't worked since the start of coming back from winter break. And, and so this person brought up that before Stop Finder, there was something that the school district was using, that was using, it was pretty basic, but it was like a PDF that would just kind of update with each of the stops. And it had like the stops and, you know, if there was a delay, why there was a delay. And, you know, like really low lift, like you go to the website on your phone or, you know, if you're at your computer, you could do that and you could see it. And, and one of the big pieces of feedback that I got was like getting back to the basics, which I feel like would also be helpful if we're spending money on something that's not working, you know, we have to discontinue that. And maybe we could save a cost while getting something that's more effective. Because I think what parents really want to know is where the buses are, are they going to be on time? If a stop change is, why that is, all the other fritz, you know, the, the beautiful things that may come with the app. If they're not helpful, then it might be just kind of tossing it. So I just wanted to see Dr. Coleman or the team, if there was any thoughts on that and if it would be helpful to like reconsider other ways that might not be as, you know, beautiful.
Sure. Thank you so much. It's a very complex question, right? And that's why this whole notion of communication is one of the five prioritized recommendations that we've been working through all year long. It's difficult when you roll out a product, it doesn't work exactly as needed and, and work to improve it. People already have an opinion formed about it. Stop Finder does work, but there are a lot of nuances that make it difficult for some families and we have definitely acknowledged that. Prince George County Public Schools has one of the 20 largest transportation systems in the country. And every, Director Baldwin has looked at a number of different routing options, one of which has a Stop Finder type app that is adjoined to that routing system. But because we are so large, every routing system can't even handle what we have to offer. They have to be customized to support our system because we transport so many children. And so I don't want families to think that we aren't exploring options we have, but we also know that we just need to continue to refine how Stop Finder is used. And we're doing that at this time. For example, the Geo Alerts, we're going to begin pushing those out as a default. Because right now, only 8,000 of the 28,000 students or staff or families who have the app are using the GeoAlert. And so they can't get a push notification. I'm sorry.
Thank you so much. I know we are over time for this section, but I do also personally want to hear more about Stop Finder. If we have some more time, as we get to the end of this, I would definitely like to hear the rest of this presentation and the answer to this question. But at this time, if we can move to Superintendent House to present the responses to pre-submitted questions for the Division of School Support and Leadership.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to, to have Dr. Rasheen Davis come off of mute and, and be prepared to answer questions. Thank you.
Yes. Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Superintendent House, and thank you, Board of Education. I'm Rasheen Davis, the Chief of School Support and Leadership. Our division is comprised of five offices. Area Office One for Elementary Schools, Area Office Two for Middle Schools, K-8 and Charters, and Area Office Three for High Schools, along with an Office of Transformation Leadership and Continuous Improvement, and an Office of Student Services. Those two, the last two offices have several departments within those offices. They're in the org chart. I could name them if, if I have time, I can go back. So the Office of School Support and Leadership, our main focus this year has been to support our schools and strengthen their school culture and climates and build in a capacity of instructional staff in schools to improve student, teacher practice and student learning. We work very hard daily to build coherence with the vision of academics and work closely to make sure that all of the support and development that's given to our schools is aligned and it's also aligned with T-26 and Blueprint and aligned with the goals of the district and the schools. So tonight I have with me Dr. Marrow, who's Associate Superintendent of High Schools, and Dr. Holly, the Director of Student Services. I'll move on to the questions. Some, two, I had four questions. Two of them have been answered in prior divisions. So if we want to go back to those, we can, but I'll, I'll name them just so that we know that they have been addressed. So the first question was, will Blueprint-funded schools, particularly the Pillar Four Community Schools, principals be given the much-needed flexibility to create the staffing plans for the funds? They must be able to spend the funds to provide solutions to issues such as absenteeism and parent engagement, which requires increased social service expertise and programs. And then this question, the Community Schools Office and Strategy falls under the Office of Transformation Leadership and Continuous Improvement. But the Student Services aspect of this would fall under Student Services. And so this question was asked prior to budget a few months ago by a board member. And immediately, Student Services, Dr. Faizan, Associate Superintendent of Student Services, in conjunction with Dr. Horton Williams, who oversees our community school strategy, they got together and they immediately began to work on this request and looking into what would it take? And so they met with several departments and they're now in the process of preparing an RFP so that social workers could be hired through an agency, much like we do our mental health clinicians. And, and what we know from that work is that there will be a need to have a supervisory position at the central office level that could, that can support these additional positions that school would, would potentially purchase and then coordinate their work and lead things like roller, like trainings, et cetera. And so all of these things are currently being worked on and being prepared for the RFP process that we anticipate being submitted next month. I linked the document also from Dr. Faizan around where her and Dr. Horton Williams are so far in that, in that question and when I answered it. So I'll open, should I go through all the questions or stop there and open it for questions?
You have four minutes and 30 seconds.
All right, I'll go through the others. So I, so I talked about that. The other question was, the other question really went to, was the one that was answered with Operations. So that was from Board Member Boozer Struthers around the implementation of SB 0427 around the facilities for the gender, gender-neutral facility and bathrooms. So that was in mind, but that was something that fell under Operations. And so Dr. Coleman responded to that, but we did have Dr. Jones reaching out to that department and working with them. And then the other one that was answered was fully funding the evening high schools. That came up during academics. Dr. Marrow answered that part so far and we seem to have a action item moving forward, which is to see what the financial implication or fiscal implication would be if we were to go back to something like that. And, and I'd be also willing to look, hold that against the flexible scheduling that we are working on and I'm going to be coming to the board at some point to request that for our overage, undercredited students as well. Because those two, I think, will go hand in hand. And that was it, I believe, from my questions. Oh, I'm sorry. The last one, the last question was around the Office of Transformation Leadership and Continuous Improvement. And I put-
Back to Day this year muted.
Oh, I'm sorry. The last question was around the Office of Transformation Leadership and Continuous Improvement. And I put a lengthy answer in the document, so I won't read it, but I will open it up if we have questions.
Have time. You've got two minutes and 35 seconds if you'd like to read.
Oh, okay. One second. I'm in the document. I'm trying to, I don't see what happened to that question.
As she's pulling it up, Board Members, if you all have questions, you can start raising your hand at any point.
Dr. Davis, would you like for me to share the response?
Yes, I'll have it. Okay. So it was a question about that department. And my response was the Department for Transformation Leadership and Continuous Improvement was created last year in an effort to address the areas that are in the title of Transformation Leadership and Continuous Improvement to strengthen the work of the Office of Schools. In the first part of transformation, this office works alongside other departments around the goals of T-26 and Blueprint that call for transformation and the, and the many critical success indicators that are part of our strategic plan that fall across different departments. But there wasn't a department who was like driving and solely leading that work. And so that work has gone under this department for our CSI and ATS I schools identified by MSD. Much of the support are for these leaders of those schools. And we know that the research shows that leadership is the second biggest factor to student success, only second to classroom instruction. And so that, that's why we see that work as being so important. And this also, that office is also a place for transformative ideas for the system to incubate before going directly to the area offices. Because one thing we know is that the work of school improvement is dynamic. I mean, it is a heavy lift. And so we want to make sure that our associate superintendents, as they work through improving schools and they can have a intentional and laser-like focus on working with schools against their goals and not having to take their focus off of that to incubate other things. As far as the leadership development, in the previous org, Professional Learning of Principals was in another department. And so that department, that work was brought under Leadership Development. And so all of our systemic meetings for principals and APs, as well as our four programs to build our leadership pipeline, has been moved under that office. And then as far as continuous improvement, the Office of Community Schools and their strategies under that department as well.
Thank you so much, Dr.
Yes.
Board Member Moss?
Thank you so much. I want to get back to this question. I, I think some of the points you made is where my questions come from. Transformation, leadership development, continuous improvement. Help, help me understand again, this feels like a, a patchwork of bringing things that should be in other places. When I see transformation work, I think that's area superintendent's leadership development. Everybody is doing that work in the org. Continuous improvement, we've got two offices. One called Strategics, like Strategic Initiatives, and another office called Strategy, who's also doing continuous improvement work. So this feels a bit redundant for an office, particularly when we're thinking about, again, where we've got to make good sense of our resources. All of these feel like somebody else's work. Can you help make the case for why that is, why, why it shouldn't be somebody else's work? Particularly this continuous improvement work sits in a completely different shop around strategy, strategic initiatives. And then I see it here, CSI, ATS I schools. That work is, really sits with principals and then you've got area folks who actually direct their work. As a principal, when you talk about transformation, I can only imagine they're trying to figure out where to go for this. As someone who was a school turnaround principal, so help me make sense of how this, how this came to be.
Yes, it's actually the opposite of patchwork. It really is about bringing coherence to this work and being a support to really break down silos between area offices. Because that work is, while it's, some of it is the same, it's very different. And it has to take a different approach when it comes to what elementary schools need, what middle schools need and what high schools need. And so in the approach of that work, that, that can become very disjointed. And so this office really is about that coherence between the area offices and really, like I said, supporting them. Those other offices that you mentioned, they are over other as, other aspects of transformative work around T-26 or Blueprint, not necessarily what touches schools and how to prepare principals so that they have the support that they need to lead that. So for instance, our CSI ATS, I, I have many examples I could give you, but one off the top of my head is when we had our audit from MSD last year and they came out to look at our CSI schools and give us feedback. One of their points of feedback to us was there didn't, there was a lack of like, what are you doing differently for these CSI schools outside of just what they get from their area office schools? Because before they get this designation from MSD, they're a school, right? A school that has all the things that come with running a school and then this is an extra designation on top. And so some of that work was living in the Office of Accountability and through Title One, but not necessarily of what it meant to develop the leaders around what they needed in order to reach those goals. And so this work for, we had to, oh, I'm sorry.
Your time is up, but I-
I'm sorry.
I also just realized that I also do get to, as a board member, I do get to have my 2.5 minutes as well. So I would like to give you the- So I would like to give you the um two point five minutes of my time to finish your response to that question. And also, um, several of us on this call are, you know, do this work every day, but just some of those acronyms, especially around uh these designations that come.
Sure, yes.
Not everyone listening knows, so could you uh let us know what it means?
Yep. Absolutely. Um, and so so that work was very disjointed across multiple departments. And so this department is a way to be uh that uh like, I would say, support to and and liaison between the area office schools and the other departments where some of that work sits. And so the CSI schools will sort of comprehensive support schools. Um, they in particular receive additional funding. Um, and so one of the things MSDA said to us is what is being done differently for these schools? Um, and so it's very um dynamic in the work of school change, change management and school improvement. And we really do want our associate superintendents of schools and our instructional directors who have a dual role of both managing and evaluating principals and supporting them um and coaching them to then take their um intentional laser-like focus away from that work to then look at something else coming down from the state. And so this office is the office where they support and they liaise that work and help get it off of the ground before it moves into the area office. And so an example I was going to give is um after getting that feedback from MSDA, we then came together across departments, we had a full day meeting, and we realized that there were a situation inside that didn't necessarily make it to the area office um in a way that they could just pick it up and 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 go with it. And so one of the things that we decided it, because math was our strategy as a district and we wanted to do something um to differentiate differentiate for our CSI schools, we brought on OGAAP, the Ongoing Assessment Project. Um, and that takes a lot of coordination to get something like that off of the ground and running and then to have someone um overseeing that work. And so that is a body of work that sits within this office and is liaised between this office and the implementation. So the strategy would sit within this office and then the implementation, and then working alongside with academics and also this department. Um, the school's office to then make sure there's, you know, coherence and that we're, that schools aren't feeling bombarded with a lot of different messages and a different, different ask across multiple departments, that it all is centralized within this team. And then this team is the team that, you know, works and liaises with these other departments before it gets to school. So have lots of examples like that. It actually is the opposite of um, you know, being disjointed or an add-on. It really is about bringing all of that together and and breaking down silos.
Thank you so much, Dr. Davis. Board Members? I don't see any more hands, but I want to make sure that I'm not moving on before everyone has been able to ask their questions. Board Member Boozer Struthers?
Yeah, I'll I'll just use my time to do a quick thank you. Um, the questions around the use of community schools funds and and more social services staffing um was mine, and and I really appreciate all the work that has been done in these last few months. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all so much. Um, I know there were several questions that in the interest of time, we had to move on from. And there were several asks from some of my uh fellow board members to provide a little bit more clarity on the questions that were asked, especially on the visuals and things like that. So just wanting to reiterate and re-up that ask to make sure that we can get that information before our next um work session. Um, and at this point, I believe those are all of our presentations. So I will now return the meeting back to Chairman Jackson.
Thank you so much. Okay, so there being no further discussion, the time is now six fifty-seven. Uh, so we have about three minutes till we reconvene uh for our public hearing, which starts at seven. Uh, so Board Members, um you can uh go off camera for the next two minutes now, I guess. Or you can stay on camera uh to seven o'clock and we'll start our public uh hearing. Thank you. Welcome back to the January twenty-third, twenty-twenty-five Prince George's County Board of Education Budget Work Session and Public Hearing for FY twenty-twenty-six. To those of, to those of you joining us from the first time this evening, I am Brandon Jackson, Chairman of the Prince George's County Board of Education. The Board of Ed- Education, thank you for participating in the public hearing to share your thoughts on the FY twenty-twenty-five Superintendent's Proposal Operating Budget. Your involvement is essential as we work together to address the needs of our students and staff in Prince George's County Public Schools. So now we will hear the constituents' comments. The chairman recognizes the registered speakers um of the pu, for public comments. Registered speakers have three minutes to make their presentations and may not relinquish any part of their speaking time. The board will recognize, the board will not recognize your comments, but will not address them. Speakers may not address individuals or issues with profanity, derogatory terms. You will be warned once. If you continue, your comments will be muted and you may be removed from the meeting. Speakers aren't encouraged to use titles rather than names, for example, chairman, board member, superintendent, principal, et cetera. Uh, just to double check with Ms. Lopez, uh Dewey, we had two speakers registered for tonight, but did any of them uh show up?
Um, thank you, Chairman uh Jackson. Uh, we had two registered speakers. Uh, one of the two um did not make it uh due to health conditions. And um the other speaker, we couldn't communicate with her, so if we allow a little more time for her to connect, that will be Ms. Alicia Baines.
Okay, when you say a little bit more time, do you want to wait? Uh, give her, how much, how much time does she say she needed? Or she she has technical difficulties?
Um, uh, we are uncertain of that, but if uh if you might want to give uh about five more minutes, uh I can try to connect or call her to see if she will join.
Okay, no problem. We can wait to uh five more minutes on Ms. Uh, Bain.
Chairman Jackson, we were unable to connect with that um public commenter. We can move forward.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzpatrick. Uh, without any objection, um, we can adjourn this meeting. So thank you all for for watching and joining us. There being no further business at this time now, and it is seven oh four. And the January twenty-twenty-third, twenty-third, twenty-twenty-five Prince George's County Board of Education Budget Work Session and Public Hearing for FY twenty-twenty-six is adjourned. Thank you all for participating. Good night.
Thank you. Good night.